Yeah, I have a couple of things to go over, Mr. Mayor. Taking advantage of the microphone in the dais there. Also, Mr. Buko and I spoke earlier today. We'd like to welcome Bob Zelli with us today to answer some questions. He's gotten a lot of information recently, so I'm sure he'll take a lot of under advisement. But I want to go over a few things that have transpired from the last meeting. The first thing I have, I think, is we're going to be updating the website. And I put these in front of you on the dais. I just got these from Bruce Groves today. Thank you, Bob. We're going to start updating the website. And the reason being is we now have a full year's data in regards to the H2S testing for a number of our monitors. And these just show four and five. I'm still waiting for a couple more to come in. Again, these just came in today. But these will be in color on the website. I also printed out copies for anybody who wants them, that they could take back with them. I'll just go over these. This is the RX-4 weekly concentration comparison for the third week of May, 2013 to 2014. So what we're doing is we're comparing the H2S readings from last year to what we're seeing this year. The -- sorry about that, Amy. The last year, as an example, we're doing it by day. On 5/13 last year, for RX-4, you had a reading of 55 parts per billion. This year, at that same time, the reading was five parts per billion. So it takes each one of these. These spikes that you're seeing here, these peaks, are from 2013. The lower line here is what you're reading today. Okay? We're going to take every week, and we're going to compare them. So I think this is good news overall, because it shows that the H2S system -- and we also have warmer weather coming, so we're comparing it to some of the warmer weather. And these compare those dates, and they're going to be corresponding dates as we come along. The RX-4 daily maximum comparison, as an example. During that week, we had a daily maximum of about 75 parts per billion. The highest we had on Roxbury IV during the same corresponding week was approximately nine parts per billion. RX-5 weekly concentration comparisons, you see the same thing. In RX-5, during that period of last year, this time last year, the peak was 30 parts per billion. You can see that this year, I'll go over here. This year, your peak is around 2.5 to three parts per billion. So you can see that the H2S system is starting to have an effect. We'll be able to start comparing these, and we will be putting on the website, so that you guys can take a look at this. All of this information has been provided to the ATSDR as well, too, as well. The other thing is, since I brought up the ATSDR, the ATSDR right now is planning on coming in at the end of the month. We don't have the exact date. We're waiting for that. And they'll be meeting with town officials. Well, they'll be meeting with the DEP, the DOH, residents, town officials. And they're trying to figure out exactly how they're going to correspond with the residents and solicit their interest at this time. So you'll be getting more on that probably over the next week, as to what their actual schedule will be.
Right. End of which month? May or June?
End of June. End of June. Okay? So when that's confirmed, I'm sure that we'll get that out to the public and go from there. So we're anticipating them coming in. They'll be looking. We've been giving them all of the data that we're producing, and we'll be continuing to do that before they come in. Which now leads me to the methane. Okay. Starting last week, there was a lot of talk about methane. This was in your packets. This is a map showing your packets.
Oh.
Shows the sites where the methane was tested. Okay? So, in 2012, the DEP was trying to take action against SCP. And at that time, SCP, working with some personnel in the DEP, had raised some concerns about methane migrating off the site. This was contradictory to all of the reports that we've had prior to that time. If you go back to the 2005 report, you can see that we weren't seeing much migration of methane off the site at that time. So then what they wanted to do was they wanted to do some additional testing. We suggested to the DEP that prior to testing outside the perimeter of the landfill and on township property, that they test along the perimeter of the landfill. All of these black spots indicated where they tested. There was approximately 30 tests done in this area, in advance of the homes in Coates Peak. T-211 and T-212, which are at the center of the landfill. This is essentially where he's disturbed the landfill now, this black line. T-211 and T-212 showed levels above the -- I'll actually read it off the report. Greater than the LEL level. Now, this was indicative of what was in the 2005 Berger Report. The center of the landfill showed methane gas. DEP then went out and did this additional testing. And on that additional testing of the approximately 30 wells, an additional 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, six wells, and those additional 30 wells showed methane. None of those were above the LEL level. In fact, most of them were below the detection level of the equipment.
What was that?
So, I know you -- yeah. You can look at the results. They're on the website. And at that time, based on this information, the DEP decided that they did not need to do any additional methane testing on the site. Okay? So I know this has come up recently. I have talked to Bruce Groves -- no, excuse me. I have talked to the DEP in regards to possibility of residents want to seek testing, whether that would be available to them as well, too. Okay? But again, this is consistent with what's been on that site in the previous tests from 2005 all the way through today. I wanted to go over that, because I got some emails over the weekend about my houses blowing up. And that's not going to be the case, as I told the residents, and this information indicates that.
I'm sorry, Chris. When was the DEP doing their testing? When did they do it?
They did their test -- yeah, I'll hold the comments. But just to answer that, like I said, these tests were done in October of 2012. I want to make sure I got it right. September, excuse me, September of 2012. So I'll hold the questions on that. But again, they did the testing. And all this information was talked about at public meetings as well, too. It came before council at the public meetings as well. So I wanted to go over those as well. I can tell you that the system, the center line system, the main trunk line is in place. There was a question today about the SO2 levels. We have referred those concerns to the ATSDR about the SO2 levels. The DEP responded, and I forward this to the people who questioned the SO2 level. I think it reached 30 parts per billion this early morning. Their standard is 75 parts per billion. If you recall, when they originally presented this information, you had background -- in New Jersey, you had backgrounds in the 20 to 30 range of SO2. I think they were pretty consistent with that. That's why they established a system of 75. We've asked them to revisit it. We've asked the ATSDR to do that. My last thing I have to say is that I got a proposal today from -- I have two more things, Mr. Mayor. I got a proposal today from EMOCOT in regards to the app, an app that would allow you to establish the level that you feel comfortable with. I just got it today. I haven't had a chance to look at it. I've been pressuring him to do that. So I need to look at that as well. I'm trying to think if there's anything I forgot, because there usually is by the time I get to my desk. I'm back to my chair in regards to this information. So that's my update for right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rath. Mr. Buko?
A piece of good news as well. The municipal court summonses that were issued to SCP back when the high levels of H2S were being admitted from the landfill and causing people distress, summonses for nuisance that were filed in municipal court. You will recall, the municipal court judge found SCP guilty in every one of those summonses. As a result of that, Mr. Benardi was fined $52,000, give or take a few dollars. He filed an appeal of that decision in the municipal court, paid $26,000, half of the fine, to the township, and filed an appeal. Last week, the Superior Court Judge who heard the case on appeal affirmed the municipal court judge's decision and required that the balance of the fines, $26,000, be paid to the township within the next 45 days. So I think that's good news. It's good work on behalf of the town's prosecutor or staff and the health officer and our inspectors, who went out there, gathered the information on the violations, and then prosecuted the case due to permission. So that is good news. Other than that, the cases remain active. The federal district court case remains inactive, but the Superior Court cases remain active and in the discovery phase. So we continue to plow forward.
Anything else, Mr. Buko?
That's it.
That's it. Okay. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we are going to be opening up the public portion. As indicated, we are limiting the speakers to one time around. Three minutes per speaker. And we will have, as usual, two public portions. The first public portion will last for one hour. Second public portion. We have a big agenda. The second public portion will last for half an hour. And we can go from there. Now, if somebody has -- wants to start this, all right? Name and address, please.
Okay. Marie Felix, 8 Conklin Road. And I'm able to actually speak today. Two weeks ago, I was so sick, I'm actually on steroids due to the emitted gases coming off that site. But basically, I would like to know, if you have monitors near my home. I'm in the older section up there, near Conklin Road and Kennedy and everything. And I saw that you had the Jefferson area. Are you referring to the Jefferson School? Or are you referring to Jefferson Street?
No. At this time, we have monitors at the Jefferson School area.
Okay. But do you have any in my section?
No. When we got the -- when we -- yeah. When we were -- I know what it is. When we were provided the information and when we first put out the monitors that were based on the number of complaints prevailing, when -- and that's where we were advised. And then we put in a second tier of monitors in advance of the schools, recreation areas, and that. Or did you call in? When you were sick last week, did you call the health department?
Oh, yes, I did. I did speak, and I -- and I have some scarring on my lungs. But put that aside. So you don't really have monitors by my area?
No, we don't have -- at this time, we don't have any monitor by them. If -- again, we weren't receiving, even at the height of this, we were not receiving significant complaints from that Jefferson area. We would get them from time to time, and we were trying to monitor them in regards to that. Because you've got to remember that the olfactory is 10 parts per billion. And then the health risks come in after that effect. So you would smell. Are you smelling it?
Yeah, we smell it. But right now, or we smell a sweet smell or whatever.
That's not you?
But okay, so put it aside. Are you going to put monitors now?
If the ATSDR comes in and recommends that we put additional monitors in, we'll look at that.
You know, what worries me is what I don't smell. Okay? That's what -- you know, maybe we're getting used to it. I don't know. I just know that I'm pretty sick up there due to all this. I have another question. It's a little confusing for me, okay? So, Mr. Buko, you were up there for that award just recently. Were you up there as the assemblyman or as the attorney?
I was up there as the assemblyman.
You were there as assembly?
Yeah, one of the same. I mean, it's the same. I'm the assemblyman, whether I'm the attorney or not. I'm actually the assemblyman.
So my question to you then are -- so if you could do that, can you also be the assemblyman in regards to our issues here? Because I'm not sure if we're getting that support from either from the senator or you just recently.
Yes. Yes, I can. There are certain issues that I can't be. And that was in terms of the legislation that was introduced by Senator Smith and ultimately adopted.
And we support that, right?
We did.
Okay.
Okay? I could not participate in that process, though. That I could not participate in. However, in litigation, I can participate in it, because it's in a court of law. These are all ethics rules that were written for members of the General Assembly that are attorneys. And each one of the assembly people that is an attorney and is an assembly person or a senator has to follow those rules. And the rules allow for attorneys that are also legislators to represent municipalities in court, to deal with issues that affect their constituents and also affect their municipalities. However, when it came to that particular piece of legislation, I went to the ethics counselor that is in the Office of Legislative Services, which is a nonpartisan group in Trenton that monitors activities of all legislators. I went to that person, and I said to her, I said, "Look, this is the situation. A piece of legislation has been drafted." And I said, "It may have an impact on the Fennemore landfill. It also has impacts on all other landfills. I need an opinion as to whether or not, as a legislator representing that town, I can be involved." And she researched it and came back and said, "No, you can't be." I've done the same thing with each piece of litigation. I called them and said, "I need you to look through the regulations and the laws and tell me if I can or can't be involved." And there's a specific law, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but there's a specific law that deals with this particular type of situation, which exempts attorney legislators from having to step down in a situation that's involved in a Superior Court, federal district court, any type of court, except for the Office of Administrative Law. If there was a case in the Office of Administrative Law, then I couldn't be involved in it. But I can represent the town on all other aspects.
So basically, it really doesn't help us having this a township attorney, because you can't represent us as an assemblyman. I mean, it really hurts us in a way.
No, no. I don't think you hurt me. I said I can represent you. The other thing I can't is in legislation. And that legislation, quite frankly, without my support, without my voice, without my vote, passed unanimously in both houses with both Republican and Democrat support. There was not one no vote. So it really had no impact, maybe, whether I was your assemblyman or not.
But it would be better if you -- if we had the support of -- you could, as the assemblyman, support us, but you can't.
No, I can. I didn't say that. I can.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Anyone else have a question? Yes. Sure. Have your name and address, please?
Maureen Usler, 12 Wecott Drive. I want to continue with Mr. Buko about what he was just saying about his duties and his responsibilities to here and there and everywhere. What about the -- your email to the DEP's chief of staff that React found, warning the DEP that if they didn't do something substantial about the landfill, that they're all going to lose your elections, all of you, the whole bunch of you?
Yeah. Listen, I've seen the email. Let me say this. Quite frankly, I'm surprised that -- you're surprised that I wrote an email attempting to get the landfill shut down. I mean, I had spent with this council months in litigation, in court, going through every avenue that we possibly could to shut the landfill down.
Excuse me. That is not what the email was about.
Let me finish. Now, I'm going to put the email into perspective, okay? The email resulted from an email that I received from a resident who's often here in the audience. And her email to Mr. Rath said, "My husband came home from work today and told me that he spoke with you regarding the air quality at our home. I am very concerned with the reading levels that he spoke about. We have lived with this smell on a daily basis for a long time. Over the past week, it has been unbearable around my house and in my entire home. My daughter is suffering from headaches. My husband has been sick while cutting wood and grilling dinner. And my dogs are wheezing after being in our fenced-in dog pen. Waiting for the bus in the AM has caused a lot of concern. We have been using masks from the hospital to cover our faces and try to hide the smell from directly hitting our face. This way of life is standards and totally unreasonable by any health standards." That email was forwarded to me by Mr. Rath. And quite frankly, it was at that point that I thought the DEP didn't really understand how bad it was up here. They had essentially refused to come up here. They had refused to respond to any requests that we asked for. And I was frustrated. And I sent an email to the chief of staff of the commissioner. And what I said to her is, "We need to meet as soon as possible on this subject." And yes, I included the next sentence about the governor and the legislators and the elected officials. But I went on to say that I really don't think you guys understand how bad this is.
Yeah, we saw all of that.
We have done all we can. And when I say we have done all we can, what I meant was, is that the town, under the Solid Waste Management Act, had done all it could. There were no other avenues. We had filed for an injunction. We had joined the court cases. We lost at every turn. So what I said is, "We have done all we can. There must be some other option you can explore." Now, when I look back and I read that, the one sentence where I mentioned the governor, the elected officials, and the council, I did that out of desperation, to try to get them to react to something. So for -- you want to criticize me for doing that, to try to get them here? You can be my guest. But the fact of the matter is, the fact of the matter is, I was desperate to get the DEP.
I have a short attention span. I'm sorry, but I need to ask my question before my three minutes.
I'm just telling you. I've given you the answer as to why the email went out.
Yeah, okay.
And it was to get the DEP's attention. And I think it actually did, by the way.
Can we have copies of the other emails that you sent about the problems we were having here in Roxbury with the dump before and after?
You have copies of all the emails that I sent.
Oh, well, I haven't seen those, though.
You have copies. Any of the open requests that were sent, we responded to.
Oh, all right, then. Can you --
What you have?
Can you highlight them on your website or something, so that we can see them all?
Township, I'm sure the township does not want to pay for me to go back and look through the numerous emails to have to do that.
You have staff and your lawyers are awful.
I mean, you have -- you've gone through all the emails. You've obviously found the ones you wanted to pick and choose, so, you know. But I'm not going to go back and look through them.
I would just like you to, you know, prove your point, that you had been after them. And this was, you know, your main objective in this email was to save yourselves at election, so.
No. That was not the main objective. The main objective was trying to get the DEP's attention.
Okay.
And actually, like I said, I think it kind of worked.
Okay.
Okay. I've got --
Now, my time is in a peat hole through my old time. Until I asked him to stop.
Excuse me. A minute, please. Would you like to ask another question? Please go ahead and ask.
We have two more. Yes.
If the time permits, will you?
My SO2 levels were 30 ppb this morning for eight hours. Well, they went from 10 to 20 to 30, but it was eight hours of high elevation. And sorry, Chris, but you didn't finish your sentence. You had a proposal from EMOCOT to do what?
Well, no, I did. It was the app, ATP, that we've been talking about allows people to set alerts that they're comfortable with.
Who to set alerts that they're comfortable with?
The residents. We talked about this at a couple meetings.
So you're asking them to set the alerts at the residents' requested numbers?
No. On your phone, you can set. If you don't like a 10 part per billion, or you don't like a five part per billion alert, you will be able to set what you feel comfortable with. You personally can set your own.
Well, that would be very good.
Yeah. What we've been working on.
We appreciate that.
You have another question?
Yeah, I have one more. This is personal. When is the remainder of Mountain Road going to be resurfaced? Because that thing has been a mess since I moved here, and I hear it's been a mess for 20 years before that.
We resurfaced it in 2002. And they'll be back --
Whoa!
Yes, ma'am. And they will be back out this spring and this summer now to actually put in some -- another overlay on that zone. Not until you fix my park holes. They'll be out this --
Oh, no. Before your --
Let's not get into that.
Maureen, they'll be out this summer.
It will be out, though. It's on the list.
We have that. And if you live in the Emmens Road area, that --
He can have a little levity if he likes to. Like, leave it alone. Don't pick on him. I like him.
They don't do my road damage.
Also, Emmens Road, excuse me, the Eland Avenue section, that's really bad. They'll be doing that. Again, that was only done nine or 10 years ago as well, too.
2002?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I have someone else have a question? Yes, sir. Gentlemen, but name and address, please.
Okay. Victor Dean, 243 Main Street, Ledwood.
Thank you.
I was wondering, you were showing the gas monitors spiking and all that, and the DEP doing it, and the DEP doing it. Is that the same DEP that's been on your tour for three years? Or is it a different DEP?
No, it's the same DEP, but it's a different -- it's a different -- some of them are different personalities.
Some of them. So, okay. I don't have a lot to say. I just want to clarify that. That were the same wires, or you've got different wires? That's all I wanted to know.
Those are coming off of our monitors, so they're fairly --
Your monitors are up, because the other day, it smelled so bad at my house, it was unbearable, and nothing registered.
Did you call?
I called one time. Now they're hanging up on me, the DEP. Or they don't take my call.
Okay. That's not acceptable.
That's what? That's not acceptable.
That's not acceptable.
Well, they informed me that.
Okay, Mr. Dean. That's not acceptable.
Okay. Thank you. Next, there's someone else with a question. Anyone?
Paul Morocco, Lazarus Drive, Ledwood. First, I just -- I'm trying to get some information. I know we've been emailing Chris about the EMOCOT data or reports. Just want to know what's going on with that. I've been requesting it for a few weeks, and there has been very limited response.
This is the -- which report are you speaking of?
What I'm speaking of is when the DEP made claims that the EMOCOT reports were inaccurate. And they mentioned that there were spikes, and they mentioned that there was drift. And it was mentioned at a council meeting that we had commissioned EMOCOT to do some studies, and we were assured that the monitors were accurate. I'm looking for some type of report or data that shows the type of activities they did and shows that the monitors are accurate.
All right. It is in the attorney's office for review right now.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to revisit the methane, because something doesn't make sense to me here. And, you know, I read the reports of the methane levels that were identified, up to 45 percent by volume out of some of these wells. And landfills just don't stop producing methane. There's a mechanism for methane generation. I'm sure Mr. Zelli could further explain this at a later time. But, you know, methane is either being generated or it's not. It doesn't just stop overnight. And the methane was detected, and there were -- the DEP was in a rush to have six action items completed. And this was ranging from checking an entire community, sidewalks, checking crawl spaces, basements, drilling new wells to monitor possible movement of the gas, and installing monitoring systems. So I find it hard to believe that they came on site, did one day inspection, found no methane, which they may have, and now all of a sudden, everything's fine. And we all know the DEP has a tendency to keep testing till the results are favorable, and then forever it's fine. We've seen that happen. And I'm not sure that that's not happening here. Because if we had methane before, it didn't just mysteriously go away.
Well, I won't talk about the actual methane generation. Mr. Zelli can talk about that. I can tell you that, at the time and the circumstances, in regards to the DEP and what they were attempting to do on that site with SCP, SCP was in court action, and they were trying to defend what they were doing on that site. And if you recall, they actually sent out -- And if you recall, they actually sent out press releases in regards to methane. They were not accurate. They were, SCP was attempting to keep control of that site, and they were trying to generate whatever public interest they could at that time.
So you're saying that the methane readings were not accurate that SCP had measured?
The methane readings in the center of the, the center of the landfill, those have been traditionally where you found methane.
But that's not what this paper says that I have, where, where the, where the wells, where it was detected that was high, where near the housing developments. And then there was a list that was put together by the DEP of 30 residences.
That's correct.
That was supposed to be checked.
What are you reading from? What are you reading?
I'm reading meeting minutes from, um, meeting minutes from August 10th, 2012. Dear Judge Wilson. So it was a phone call between the township SCP and, and the DEP.
Did you, actually, the minutes that you're talking about, are those the ones that, are those the township's version, or are you reading SCP's version?
These are on the letterhead of David Kessler and Associates.
That's, that's, yeah, that's SCP's.
That's SCP's.
Everyone signed off on it, so.
Okay, I'm just wanting you to know that that's SCP's.
Okay.
And that kind of goes to my defense, or my, not my defense, that goes to my supposition. They were doing everything they could.
So you're saying that there weren't, you're saying that there weren't those high readings?
I'm saying they were intentionally exaggerating the issue.
So, so we have, we have test reports from the DEP showing that there was zero methane?
Oh, yeah.
In certain wells, yes.
In certain wells, yeah.
And those test reports are where?
They're on, they're on our website.
Okay.
They've been on our website, I believe, since 2012.
We'll, we'll, we'll take a look at them. Next question, I have two more questions. And just as a sign, I'm just wondering why Mr. Zelli's here today. Is he answering questions?
Well, he can answer the abatement of the methane, however.
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
Was that the reason why he's here today?
He's here today because of a lot of the meetings, you, you've asked technical questions. Mr. Thomas has asked technical questions. And I thought it would be appropriate to have an expert here to address some of your concerns, if he could.
I do...
If not, he could take your questions and let us know the answers.
Okay. I appreciate that, but in the three minutes, it just seems like a waste to have him here.
Keep going.
The other thing I had was that the stack test that the DEP gave us, is the township going to review them? Because they seem extremely deficient to me. But I'm not an expert.
I'll let Mr. Zelli answer that. We're under review. We are reviewing it, though.
Okay. And?
We just thought we're reviewing it. We're also looking at comparison to which control financing authority, again, just know they don't have a permit, so they don't have...
I'll start over. Yes, we are reviewing it. With respect to the report they gave, any deficiencies. In addition, we took the time to look at the permit that the Warren County Pushing Control Financing Authority has. We know this, they do not have a permit, but if they did, and if it was the same one. And again, this area is a non-attainment area, which we told them that back in January of 2013, which means that the background of SO2 is already at a high level. And this was all part of information that we provided going back 15, 16 months. But we are reviewing it, and...
Can you explain to the public what you mean by, it's a non-attainment area, that the SO2 is already at a high level in that area?
Yeah, due to the industrial age, there, there's manufacturing to or west down Pennsylvania, Ohio, that the drift and the prevailing winds coming in this direction, air's already polluted. If you ever go out to Lehigh University, go out in that direction, Plummer Township, you'll see those mountains don't have any trees on them. It's due to emissions, historical emissions. There's maps, you can see them online, it's called a non-attainment area, that, that already, there are certain areas, like this area, Warren County, that there's a map, and it shows a circle. And without doing anything, if you want to get a permit, you're already can't, you're already above the typical permit limits. It's, it's, you haven't, your backyard is already above the, the permit limits because of the, the drift coming from, prevailing winds coming from the west.
And you're saying Roxbury qualifies for that?
Qualifies. There's a, it's a very large area, and it's called a non-attainment area. Warren County, I think, is almost entirely in it. And I, and I just don't remember, but it does come out into Morris County.
Okay.
I, I do want to clarify the, Bill, the methane, I just want, I, I, I read what their memo said, and they found methane on the site, and they found methane in two wells on the site. There was no methane found offsite. And you saw the same M O I read from September 2012. And my understanding, in talking to DEP today, that their collection, landfill gas collection would obviously collect any methane, hydrogen sulfide, any gas that would be in it. And methane is, you know, the byproduct of the decomposition, the organic matter, and hydrogen sulfide is the byproduct of decomposition of any of the wallboard. And this is in an anaerobic environment, therefore, there's not oxygen down there, and, and it will continue. With the cap, they'll reduce, eliminate, eliminate's a, you can't eliminate it, you're going to reduce greatly the moisture content by the impervious cap. Therefore, one of the, the elements that you need in the chemical process, you being a chemie, would, would result in not having the correct formula, the environment to produce either methane or the hydrogen sulfide. So both of those compounds will dissipate with time. However, you're still the material there, but with the cap, and the DEP continuing to monitor, probably in perpetuity, like any landfill, for any fractures or failures of the cap. And again, it's a synthetic cap, 40 mil with two foot clean soil on top, on top of it.
Okay. And, I mean, just, just, I mean, the concern is that, I, I agree with you, and yes, this mitigation system may help with the methane, but from 2012, when this was supposedly detected till now, there were no collection wells and gas extraction systems.
I'm reading the report right now again. There was very strong language, and I know these folks actually that wrote this, and they're very clear in here, they used the word immediately. They said immediately that their gas collection system needs to be installed and operated to control and mitigate the potential offsite migration methane. So they, they, you know, they use that word, immediate. Immediate need to install and operate an effective methane gas. And these are the, this is the same language that I used in the September 2013 report. And that our telephone conversations many times with Attorney General was, and the Judge Wilson, who didn't, she wasn't getting it, was, because the material's going in, there was going to be consequences down the road, because now by entering the sheet rock, you're going to produce hydrogen sulfide, which then is going to be more costly. So they say immediate, and I, I, need to me means they, they did, they didn't understand and they did observe that there was methane. And this system is going to collect, is going to collect it. Bill, you have another question?
Just one more. Is there an SO2 monitor on the stack outlet?
I understand there is, Bill. I have been told by the DEP that there is. And in fact, one of the things that Ed Putt tells me, and I wish you'd flip this in as well, too, because I hate to report in relation to the DEP, is that when you were pointing out that the 20 to 30 parts per billion, the stack emissions were actually lower than that at...
Okay, but we have no way of knowing that.
It's not tied into our system.
Okay. And if he's, you know, trying to defend the question on email, I don't understand why he wouldn't just say, just say that, instead of trying to pull all this information in from, from the monitors around town.
That's why, that's why I get, that's why I always ask you guys, if you can, to direct your emails to them.
Could the township ask him if, if they'd be willing to put that data point on the town monitoring system?
We have it other times, but more importantly, they say that they have it where it's automatic, where it'll shut down, the system shuts down.
I understand that, but it'd be nice if we could see that data point. It'd be, it'd be transparency. I think the residents would appreciate it.
You can ask them to look at it.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone else have a question? Yes, ma'am. Hey, David, address, please?
Sure. Angela Johnson, 3 Rawlings Court. And I just wanted to follow up on the, on the emissions from the stack. Because I think I asked a couple weeks ago, too, about, I'm just not sure I understand, are they just testing for SO2 or other things coming out of the stack as well? Because I guess, like the one lady said, my concern is, what, is there other stuff coming out that we can't smell?
Uh, I don't know. I don't know. I would check it. That's all I can do.
Okay. Does Mr. Zelli, do you happen to know? Or should we be concerned about, because that, I mean, that's what...
It's a great question, and I will, I'm reviewing all the data now, and I'm going to be, I have a report that I owe the town very shortly, next few days.
And like the Warren County permit, like the thing that they would have to have, would they have to be testing for other things, or like, what's the standard?
That will, that will all be in my report.
Okay. And the report is like next week, or?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Well, before the next council meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes? Shannon, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Don't know if you can really answer this, maybe, maybe Chris can.
Your address, please?
Oh.
32...
32... Sorry, it's been a long day. I have a question. The township, I know Abby had come out, and she had tested my water.
Yes.
My well's totally contaminated again. So this is like the third or fourth time. I have a company, you know, I'm trying with a plumber, he's given me names of company, but they're telling me it's coming in from the groundwater, and I can't even wash my clothes at home at this point.
What is it they're saying was concerned?
Well, I definitely have its total hydrogen sulfide again. I mean...
Okay. Lady Goff, Lady Goff can address this, but what I, what I understood is that sulfides can get into a well. Hydrogen sulfide directly is a gas. It cannot get directly into a well, in that form. So I don't know if that's what I understand, and that's why they don't...
Well, this, right, the same smell that is outside, the rotten egg odor, is now in, in my water. It's in my shower, it's in my sinks, it's in everything, so I...
What did you do last time?
I had a company come out, a plumber, you know, came out, and he cleaned out the whole well. I couldn't use my well for four days. He dropped some tablets down there, they've changed the filters. My husband faithfully changes the filters every, every other month, so every two months, you know, changes the bypass, you know, the filter, and we were good. I mean, this happened once, okay. It happened again, had to treat it again. Now it's coming on to the third time, no, this is the fourth time, and now it's really horrendous. And I was gone all weekend, and I didn't realize how bad it was till I came home and I went to go run the sink, and it's, you know, I've lived there 12 years, so this is my thing. I've lived there 12 years, I've never, ever had an issue about it. So this really concerns me, because I was told that if I'm in the shower, and the hot water and the driplets, it's, you know, the steam, like, as you know, that we steam in the shower, that we're breathing this. And this can cause me to have the more respiratory, and this might be why my family is so ill, because daily we're taking the shower, and I was told that the steam can go in, you know, you're breathing it in, they're suggesting that I just take baths, so this is...
What we're going to do, what we're going to do is, we're not only going to test your water, we'll get you in contact with Mr. Harvey Klein.
Okay.
Harvey does our water testing for the township. He's really good. I know some of the residents that spoke with him, he's probably one of the preeminent experts on this hydrology and water.
Okay.
We'll test it again, we'll have a meet with you, we'll go over it.
I mean, I'm scared, you know, this is scary that, you know...
What I, what I understand is that H2S doesn't get into the water, you can get sulfides, there can be many sources of sulfide. And I think they told you that last night.
Of course.
We'll go back over it.
But nobody will guarantee, it's funny, because these companies that come out, nobody will say for sure that it's not the landfill, and nobody will say, you know, just think about it, it's common sense. You live in a household for 12 years with a well, and all of a sudden, with all of this that escalated, all of a sudden, my, my well water can't be used? Like, it's just not...
Could, can you also bring your well log when it was drilled, that shows the formation? Because there's geologic, I'm a geologist, there's geological formations that have natural occurrence.
I'm sure we have that in our big homeowners pack in our little safe, right? Yeah.
You might.
All that.
If you give it to Chris, I'll, I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
And I've, I've had many wells in the area, not Roxbury, but in New Jersey, that have rotten egg smell, that have nothing to do with the Fenimore landfill or any landfills.
I mean, I definitely would say that that could be true, but in our incidents with the amount of, of what's happened, you know, it's just, I'm sorry, but one year of hydrogen sulfide in our AM and this.
I will, I will look at it for you.
Okay. Okay, great.
We'll get the test done.
Shannon, you owe me some numbers, right?
Oh, I know, I was away, I'm sorry. I will, I'll get to you this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? No one, no one, once, twice. Hey, David, address, please?
Yeah, Dan Massey, 11 Himlock. So I really don't have a whole lot, but I'll ask you a couple few scattered questions in my remaining time here. So first of all, the sulfur dioxide background, and I guess these are questions, just sort of statements, and the non-attainment issue. My understanding, and Mr. Zelli, correct me if I'm wrong on this, the, the reason that this whole area is designated as non-attainment isn't so much to do with the natural background, but with DEP's petition to make it designated a non-attainment, a non-attainment area, based on their own air modeling of what the Portland facility could potentially do with sulfur dioxide. And in fact, during that petition, there was measurements taken in the Chester area with the Chester monitor for SO2. And the majority of time, that monitor showed less than three parts per billion in, in SO2. So my, my take on that is that the indication is that we're not necessarily in a high SO2 background area. We're designated as being a non-attainment area because there's this potential for difficulty from the influx from the Portland facility and from other Pennsylvania facilities, mostly the Portland facility. But the measurements, the data that were taken in the creation of that petition were at three parts per billion. Is that...
You're making a statement. If you're saying it's correct, it's correct. It, it is based on data coming from Pennsylvania.
Okay.
The Portland facility, I'm very familiar with it. I went down and met with Kristi Whitman's staff to talk about our permit, because of difficulties in getting our permit as a result of the non-attainment area. I went down there with my supplement at the time, to my district, because of this, because of the Portland and the other facility in proximity.
Okay. Can you also comment on what Mr. Ratz was saying about the hydrogen sulfide in, in water?
What about it?
So Mr. Ratz said his understanding was that you're not going to get hydrogen sulfide in, in water.
I didn't say that. I said...
No, I'm asking...
Oh, I don't know. I'm going to, I'm going to look at the resident's data to look at the geology, to see if it's possibly that it is, what the cause and effect is.
Okay.
I'm a scientist, I don't just jump to conclusions. I want to look at the data that she has, and look at the site conditions.
Okay.
And try to help her out.
Okay. My understanding, Chris, is that, and this is just numbers I've seen, the solubility of hydrogen sulfide in water is about the same as that of chlorine. of hydrogen sulfide water is about the same as that of chlorine. So it should be possible for H2S to dissolve pretty readily in water, so...
But then what I understand is that it is a sulfide within the water, tested as a sulfide.
It's dissolved H2S.
And then it's tested as a sulfide.
Well, however you test it, but it is dissolved H2S and as such, it can essentially evaporate back out of the water as H2S, so...
Love to hear it if Mr. Zelli comes back to contradict what you're predicting, that's fine with me.
I'm not looking, I just wanna help the woman out. I wanna look at her data. I don't know where she lives. There's marching walls in the area. Do you know what the data is for H2S in existing marching walls on the site?
I have no idea.
Neither do I.
Yeah, so my point was, I, you know, I don't think it's necessarily true that it's not, it doesn't get into water, because the numbers show that it certainly could...
We'll take a look at it.
Do, 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 what else? I think that's about it. You know, I expressed my disappointment last time about the fact that the township hasn't sort of taken up the torch with respect to my paper in the DEP. I'll take this opportunity to sort of reiterate that disappointment. You know, Mr. Ratz, you said something before about an app and having residents sort of pick their own alarm levels, alert levels for gases, and, you know, to me, that almost smacks of another, you know, throwing our hands up in the air saying, well, let's, you know, if the residents are gonna panic, let's let them, you know, this is their battle and our battle.
Well, Dan, what we've got here is a lot of people just are not comfortable with our and our systems and our levels that were recommended by the ATSDR, DEP, DOH, and they're not comfortable, and they're not comfortable with care of their children, and they wanted to make their own decision. And if they feel like two parts per billion is something that they wanna bring their children from outside, then they should have their option. We'll continue in our system, we'll continue in our alerts, we're not advocating that. It's just that, you know, individual responsibility, individual, one of the things that's come out of here is your ability to get your own information. And to get your own information, you should be able to utilize that to protect your own children as well to...
I agree with that, I understand that, I appreciate that. On the other hand, I think if residents are concerned about those levels, that, you know, perhaps it is incumbent upon the township's leadership to go and take those concerns and try to address them in a more formal way. If they're not comfortable with them, there must be a reason why they're not comfortable, and maybe that, those reasons should be investigated and explored, and everyone needs to come to some sort of consensus rather than saying, okay, if you want two parts per billion and you want three parts per billion, that's fine. So I'd like to see more investigation and effort on the township's part in driving this sort of consensus.
I probably got it.
Okay.
Last quick question, I won't get into it now, but Mr. Zelli, have you seen the paper that I wrote and submitted to the township?
I received it this afternoon.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Anyone else, some question?
Melissa Dajison, Six Justine, please. This question's for Robert. What report are you putting together that's your given to the town council before the next town council meeting?
It's a review of the error stack results. It'll be a letter review report.
What do you mean by that? Just in a letter, just a letter? I don't know what you mean by that.
It doesn't, it's, it's a review report similar to how the town engineer would have a report of reviewing someone's work. I'm not redoing anything, I'm redoing their work. It'll be several pages.
So you're reviewing somebody else's work?
We provided the stack test information to Mr. Zelli and asked him to review that information and compare it to what he's experienced at Warren County and the permit that they have at Warren County, and to make sure that the information is accurate.
And what if it's...
And if he has, and if he has any concerns or comments regarding the results, he'll put that in his letter to the council as well, and then the council will take appropriate action based on his, on his recommendation.
Okay, so you'll have that letter by the next town council meeting, comparing it to the Warren County facility, and then your recommendations based on that.
Yeah, same as I said before, we're reviewing it, comparing it to the existing permit, even though there's not a permit for here, if there's any conclusions, recommendations or suggestions already included in the letter report. And I, my deadline, I wanna get it to Chris and Anthony, so it'll be available for the next council meeting.
And it doesn't matter if there's not an existing permit for here? Like, how does that come into play at all?
Well, I have to compare it to something, so I'm using it.
I'm not, I'm not a scientist, so like, I'm just trying to put in laypeople's terms for myself to understand it, that's all.
Well, it's a similar condition, so that's why I'm comparing it to the PCFA.
Right, 'cause I happen to work up in that area in Oxford Township, so I know about that facility, I drive by it every day, so I was just, I'm just curious. Okay. The second thing is I just wanna make sure that we go on record saying, according to you, Chris, that there's no concern for any of the 30-plus residents to be concerned with methane.
What I was, what I said was, is that a resident called me and said she was worried your house was gonna blow up, and I said, your house isn't gonna blow up.
Okay, so there's a difference between obviously somebody's house blowing up and a concern for methane.
That methane comes from many sources, so I'm just letting you know. That's, that was what I said, so you can take it as what I said.
Okay. I just think it's, it's just very, still very concerning that, I don't know. This is a comment. It's people's lives, Shannon dwells, you know, she can't even take a shower without breathing in, God knows what she's breathing in, and her kids. And it's kinda like the DEP's playing games, you know, they're trying to alarm us on one hand, you guys are trying to reassure us on the other hand that we shouldn't be alarmed. You know, what's there, who knows what to believe anymore, quite honestly. And it was very interesting for me to learn that SO2, I didn't know this, I guess I should move out of Morris County, entire Morris County has levels above permit, the permit level for SO2, so this is, this is normal Morris County?
New Jersey.
Oh, the state of New Jersey?
Yeah, I don't think that's... Are you talking about the attainment level?
Yeah, the attainment level, yeah.
I'll let Bob, I'll let Bob Zelli answer, but I don't think he said all of Morris County.
No, there's a map, I'm sure it's all online.
He said Morris County almost entirety in it, that's what he said.
No, Warren County, where you work, that's, that's, that's like in the heart of the bad area where you work in Oxford.
Why did he bring it up?
TillCon Coria's, that area.
Okay. So again, we're just comparing this area to Warren County, 'cause that's on like...
I'm comparing the permit.
Yeah, the permit to Warren County, because that's on like...
If the town had, if Louis Berger was working for the owner of this facility, they would have had to go, we see the permit, or say Burt's all originally. The permit would have probably been very similar to the one the PCFA has, so therefore, I'm gonna use as a comparison what the permit limits are and the criteria for Warren County.
Okay, and then this question is for Attorney Buco. Just curious, 'cause I, with the assemblyman piece, so you couldn't have, or your father couldn't have, that Senator Buco initiated an investigation like Senator Smith did of the DEP, the mishandling of the DEP?
My father, my father is shephoned and report. He can do, he can do whatever he would like in terms of fenimore, okay? And this is where there was a little bit of confusion about how they said that my father's legislation moved rapidly through, you know, and was enacted. In fact, you will recall that it wasn't my father's legislation. My father initially had legislation drafted just to abate fenimore, and it was that piece of legislation that initially went to a hearing in the Senate, and Senator Smith stopped the hearing, and in fact, some of you were there.
That was the end of the hearing, yeah.
And said, we're not moving forward with this, with the senator's legislation. I am working with the DEP on my own legislation to not only address fenimore but all landfills in the state of New Jersey. So it was not my father's legislation that moved rapidly through the Senate and the Assembly. It was actually Senator Smith's legislation that he prepared. My father's bill never received a vote and was essentially tabled. So my father can act on any of that, and in fact, my father voted for, as well as Michael Patrick Carroll, like my colleague, voted for that legislation, Senator Smith's legislation when it came through the House. I could not, and I could not because when my father came to me and said he was gonna put in this legislation, I went to our ethics council, I went to the person that advises us, and I explained to her the situation, and she said to me, "Assemblyman, I would stay away from that because it could have an impact on the town that you represent." And I said, "Okay, I will stay away from it. I will vote on it, I will comment on it." And in fact, when the bill came before the budget committee, you may recall, I made a statement that I had spoken to our ethics council, and she advised me not to participate in a public hearing or vote on the matter, and I therefore abstained, and that's why. But my father can do whatever he wants. But the only aspect where I'm limited in terms of being the attorney and the assemblyman is in legislation specific to the township and litigation matters in the Office of Administrative Law. In any other litigation matter in the Superior Court, in federal district court, I can participate, and that's been thoroughly reviewed by the legislature, and like I said, in fact, there's legislation that was enacted many years ago to address this situation.
So then your dad could have called for an investigation, the DEP, not you, but your dad could have.
My dad, my dad could call for an investigation, the DEP, yes.
Okay, I've got it. Anyone else?
I've got it.
I'm sorry?
Another question, or no?
Quick one.
Quick one. Where is all the morality in this whole situation? Have a good night.
Yes.
I have a question based on what we talked about before with the, what was coming out of the...
Stack.
Stack. And I don't know if anybody remembers, but I'm sure they do, and this goes back to, I think, when, when, before the mayor changed, Mayor Hall was the mayor then. And I remember, and you guys can go back and check the records, that I asked, if I put my big Italian nose up there, what am I gonna smell? And I got the same answer that Mr. Ratz just gave now, "I don't know, we'll look into it." Well, how long are we gonna look into it? Wait, wait, Mr. Ratz, hold on. My wife goes to my mother's house because she's sick. I'm paying taxes in this town, and I asked, almost, when, but a year ago, what's coming out of here? And you answered the question and said, "I don't know, we'll look into it." Here we are, here at Glager, it's again, "I don't know, we'll look into it." Can you just answer the question? Why are we not looking into it?
I will answer the question.
Okay, please.
You're talking about the stack test.
Yeah, that's what I said. And I said, "My big Italian nose up there."
I will answer the question. You're talking about the stack test. We've gotten the results from the stack test after we had to open them. You guys opened them as well, too. We had to open them. That is the report that Mr. Zelli says that he's working on right now.
And what's it gonna test? Everything that's in the air that's gonna make us all sick?
I don't have all of the stack test results myself. You, the stack test had been provided to Mr. Zelli, he is going to look at those. Tonight I was asked, I'm answering the question. Tonight I was asked, are they testing for other items? That's the monitor they have there for SO2. The question is, is that SO2 monitor monitoring for any other elements? I responded...
No, no, Mr. Ratz, a year ago, I asked you, if I put my, don't look, put your eyes up in your head, I asked a year ago, what's coming out of that stack? If I put my Italian nose up there, what am I gonna smell? And you said, "I don't know, we'll look into it," a year ago.
And we did, and that's why we got the stack test.
Okay, so what else is coming out of there? A year ago, you knew. You stole me, you did. A year ago, you knew. What's in here? I'd really like to know. I don't think you guys are doing it.
When Mr. Zelli finishes the current report, it will be released to the public.
Don't be smart with me. 'Cause you guys, you know, I...
Listen to me.
Don't you!
I am asking you to listen. We listen to you.
You guys don't listen to us.
We listen to you very carefully.
The other thing I would like to know, the other thing I would like to know, and I really wanted to answer and I asked this...
When we get Mr. Zelli's report, you'll be able to...
Okay, fine. Okay, fine. We'll see what Mr. Zelli's report says.
Exactly.
And one more question I have. The last meeting we were, I was at, is, was the meeting when I asked a simple question, why have we not told the rest of the residents in this town that the issue with fenimore? And the answer I got was, "No." Okay, no. So I've been thinking about this all day, and I don't wanna just like temper, but why did we not tell the rest of the residents? The mayor, who's not here, so I'm dealing with you now, he said, "Safety, the people's health, and reliability, and then whatever else, those are not further, for us, we people, who you guys work for." He said, "And money's not the case." So he said, "No." So please tell me why. We won't send a letter out.
If Mr. Ratz can answer that, we already sent one letter out.
To the whole residency of this town?
To all the residents of the town.
When? When?
About a year ago.
Well, I never got that letter, Mr. Ratz. Yeah, don't, Mr. Ratz, please, it's always one of these. I'd like to know, where's that?
We can give you a copy of that if you'd like.
I would like.
We went over this at the last meeting.
Yeah, I know. You can tell me crap, then he...
No, the last meeting that you were in, the same question came up, I had a copy of that for that meeting. So I've got it.
And that went to all the residents, Mr. Ratz?
That is correct.
Can you prove that?
Was it on the computer?
Can you prove that? That it went out in the mail to everybody in the county? Don't get frustrated, Mr. Ratz, this is why you're getting paid for. Did it go out as regular mail or on, because you guys are saying emails, you guys are saying on one line?
Please, I'm trying to answer the question.
Well, please, did you, did you send it to all the residents in US mail?
Yes. It was, the letter was specifically in regards to the township's alert system, and it said, "Should you want information about a number of items including fenimore and latest updates on fenimore, please sign up to our alert system so that we can be proactive."
That's not what I asked for, Mr. Ratz. I asked, I specifically asked, that letter that came out, that all the other towns in this town, around here got, from the DEP, and it says, "There's a real problem here." And you guys said, "No."
Carl, we've sent that letter, I can tell you that it's...
And what does it say again? I didn't see it.
We'll provide you with a copy tomorrow.
Carl, yes.
Well, we've taken this under advisement, we've responded on numerous occasions in regards to this, like you said at the last meeting.
You know, it's so freaking frustrating, everything's under advisement, we'll let you know, we'll get back to you.
No, we just responded to this.
I got sick kids. You know, I'll own this town if somebody in my town, in my family dies, and you know what? That's why I'm so upset about it. Not one of you care a crap about any of our children.
That's not true.
Then do something to fix it!
Okay.
I think, you know what? We have a vote. We have a vote, and we can throw out every morning.
We've got about ten minutes left to this public, which is bullshit.
Mern Hernandez, Compton Road. Just to follow up on Mr. Panetta's comments, what he asked for specifically was a letter to the citizens with all the latest information about the health effects, following up with, following the Department of Health letter that we got in February, and all the information that we've learned. A letter a year ago would not have contained any of that information. The letter that you sent out a year ago was a more general information letter that included fenimore but did not address the questions that he's asking about. So to say that you sent a letter addressing this concern is a flat out, I don't wanna say lie, but you're, you know, you're turning words around.
I'm telling you, you're being a liar!
You're trying to spin everything, and people know what they receive to...
Mr. Ratz just explained to you what was in the letter.
I know.
And it wasn't what he said!
What I am saying is that what Mr. Panetta asked for was a different letter, and Mr. Ratz keeps bringing up this letter. I'm saying...
No, Mr. Ratz, Mr. Ratz brought it up at the last meeting, he did not bring it up, the residents brought it up this time. Let me just, again, let me try to answer the question. I know it's not what you saw, and I understand that, but if you had responded to that letter and you had gone on to the alert system, you would have been getting all this information. And that's a better way than to continually send out data. You may not agree with me.
Better way to hide the problem.
One more thing, we've been, and I appreciate it, you being very patient with me, I appreciate it. We have, we've been over this letter every meeting for the last, I don't know, three or four months. Council has taken the position that we're not gonna send the letter.
Why? Why? Mr. Ratz, why?
Because we've already notified the residents, we want...
But you haven't notified them about the more recent findings. Have you notified them about the findings from the February 4th, 2014 DOH report? Did you send a letter notifying them that they're...
That report is, that report is available. Everybody in this room knows it.
But we, but, yes, Mr. Ratz, the report is available. It is available online. We, we searched, excuse me, I'm not done. We searched the website for it, and we found it. It is available, but what you have been, people have been asking for, and I mean, understand the process, people have been asking for the township to send a letter containing that particular information. That information, not a letter saying, "If you want information, go here." That's been sent. We understand. I understand, I, I speak English. I understand. That's been sent, we understand, I understand, I, I speak English, I understand. What we are asking for is a letter with that information. The, at the high school at the Horseshoe Lake meeting, Mayor Riley said that letter would not go out because not everybody in town is affected. And that is the issue that we take with it, because everybody in town is affected, because even if you live in further regions of town, you may have a child that goes to high school that plays sports in fields that are affected. So, to say geographically, you're not, I'm not done, geographically, you're not within one or two miles, so you're not affected, is a falsehood. People also go to businesses, go to work near the landfill. And, might I add, in one of those D E P reports, and I can't be absolutely specific because I don't have an automatic robot memory, but there are indications that town water wells, because town water wells are located on the mountain, within a certain number of years will be affected by runoff. You may not have seen it, but I did. I know what, I'm not, and I can look for it, but, so you say, so, okay, but let's go back to the question of the letter, because-
It's been, it's been asked, and it's been answered.
That's my point, Mr. Ratz, ask and ask and ask!
How can this council, my question is, how can this council say that those people are not affected? Do you not think-
You know what, this is, you know, one of the things, and I know you're probably gonna go, "Oh, he's gonna do this again." This is one of the things that we're asking the ATSDR to look at.
You do!
But let me, let me ask you something, let me ask you. This, before you, so before you heard from the ATSDR, ATSDR, you said no to the letter, and now you could just say, "We're waiting for the ATSDR." So, you know, why can't the township take ownership of this and say, "We're trying to help people"? The other thing is the ATSDR is gonna show up, and people are not gonna know what they're talking about if they send, if they send out letters, if the town doesn't say, "This is what's going on." You, you are at the position that you should be telling people that this happened. I cannot tell you how disgusted I am with what I've learned recently, with the whole methane information, meetings that you are at, information that you know. When, when Aaron, my spouse Aaron and I went to purchase her house in October of 2012, before he purchased it, he called you and spoke to you directly, Mr. Ratz, and asked you if there were any concerns that we should have with this landfill. And you told him it was gonna be clean fill, and the only issue we would have was truck traffic.
And that's what we were told.
But you already knew about the methane.
No, we did not.
A month before that!
Yes, you did!
You were saying when you were- We've opened your emails! We see your emails!
How could you say you didn't know when you were at a meeting?
All your emails, Oprah, fun times.
We have someone up there speaking now, please.
You weren't here for the start of the meeting. We, I went over those methane issues. There were many questions prior to your arriving. You may want to look at the tape, and you'll see how that was addressed. I don't, I don't want to go over it again because the residents who were here at the start of the meeting-
But you told us that there was-
Because you continually hide things. Like, you're hiding all these other things, you won't send out a letter because you don't want people to know.
I'm sorry, would you like to lay this to me, please?
She's my wife.
Okay, I'm sorry, please look at that, because I think it addresses it.
Okay.
No, it doesn't.
I, I, I just, did you know about the methane gas before September?
You did, because I read your email.
Did you know about what was-
Because I read your email.
Okay, let me go over this again.
Wait, hey, listen, you went over it, Mr. Ratz.
No, I have a question, did you know? Can you just say yes or no? You don't have to do it again. I watched the video.
You told her, you told her, you don't have to go through that, Mr. Ratz.
I don't want-
Don't go over it again.
Don't go over it again, you told her, you lied!
I want to answer, I want to get your note.
You lied to her!
Well, enough, enough.
Don't tell me enough!
Enough.
Tell me enough! It's an open meeting, don't tell that.
It is an open meeting, and someone else is speaking. I've had enough.
So, we can do, throw me out, you wanna throw me out, throw me out, throw me out.
Mr. Ratz, we did not ask you to go over this, I want a yes or no, I want a-
Okay, let me go over it, because I could tell you where the methane was, okay?
Yes or no?
I have, it was a simple question, yes or no?
I'll answer your question.
No, it's not an answer, it's a yes or no. Yes, he knew. And you didn't tell Aaron.
That's it, you answered the question.
And we bought a house under property-
This is not funny, Mr. Ratz!
You want to finish? Okay, you can go back and find, 2005, in this area, there was methane in the Berger report. The question is, is meth, methane migrating off the site? Methane is not migrating off the site.
Never tested. Put a cap on it.
Never tested. Never tested.
That wasn't tested thoroughly, but my question, Aaron's question, when he called you, was, were there any issues with the site? You already knew about the methane, you just said you did, and now, I don't, I don't, it was an issue, it was an issue with, with it.
You can't, but I already got my answer from your email.
It was a simple yes or no. I'm trying, I'm trying, Mayor.
You've been paying my money to try, Mr. Ratz. You're all gonna take it back.
Does anyone else have a question? Because we're just about ready to wrap up the public.
I didn't realize I finished.
Thank you, you did.
Give a crap about the public.
Yes, ma'am, can I have your name and address?
Diane Suda, Toronto, New York.
Good job.
Diane, I'm sorry, can I get your last name? I'm sorry. Suda, S U D A. Thank you. I guess my, it's maybe really more of a statement, and actually, you kind of can go back to like the whole letter thing. I'm sure all of you guys are either fathers, your husbands, maybe grandfathers, that you don't ever leave these meetings and ever think about how irresponsible something as to the way this township has handled the newsletter situation. It's a scapegoat, like, you totally did not notify anybody about phenomore landfill. I would love to know the percentage of our population in this town who is not online. What is the percentage of senior citizens in this town? I guarantee you, not one of them know about the phenomore landfill.
I think they all know.
They all know.
Bloney, that's bloney, don't lie!
Hold on, let, let the man talk.
Excuse me, Gary and myself go to each Club Met meeting every two weeks. We hit each club, there's over 400 members in each club.
But are they online?
Some of them are, more than half are.
Some of them, but the thing is, the fact is, the information that you're, no, the information that you're providing them, I guarantee you, is a tad bit different than the information that they're supposedly been able to read. No, you can't win, because you know what? Time after time, we come to these meetings, we listen to you guys, we want to believe you, we have a town council who is clear, I mean, a township attorney, who is clearly conflicted, and it's just, it's so frustrating. I mean, I guess, what I came up here with simply a statement that I wrote down, because I couldn't trust myself to actually be able to verbatim go off the top of my head, is basically, considering the environmental disaster that we have here in the township of Roxbury, and what Lois Gibbs had stated last week at the meeting at Horseshoe Lake, do you guys truly believe in your heart that you are doing everything to assist the township of Roxbury? That this is the legacy that you guys want to leave behind? That this is, you're satisfied, you are satisfied with the work that you have done to help the residents and to work towards resolving the phenomore landfill?
Yes.
You do?